Hello everyone and welcome to the forum for the Tucker City Council District two post two race. I am your host editor and publisher Dan Wizenhut. The election is going to be held on November seventh and we're going to meet the candidates. Our candidates are Patrice Cosby, Patrice hello. Vin Nguyen, Vin, how are you today?
Fantastic.
And Derek West, Derek, how are you sir?
Very well, thank you.
So this forum is is being recorded and it's going to be published on Decators.com on our YouTube channel and Facebook to search. Decators on YouTube and Facebook, you'll find those platforms. Each candidate is going to have time to make an opening and a closing statement and we'll give each candidate two minutes for that. And two minutes to answer each question and we're going to provide some extra time for some responses back and forth if we need that. And I'm going to be keeping time. So the candidates know the rules, the candidate know my signal when there's got thirty seconds left. So we're going to roll right into this. We're going to begin with opening statements and we're going to go left to right. Patrice, we're going to start with you. You've got two minutes to make an opening statement.
Hi everyone. Hi fellow candidates. Hi, I hope everyone is doing well. I am Patrice and I am running for a city council district two post two. A little bit about me is I've been married to my wife for going on ten years. We have two kids from fifteen to twenty-nine and two grandkids from five and five and two. My mother-in-law lives with us and she is almost eighty and that's a blessing. And so I just wanted to see the city of Tucker represented how the city of Tucker is through throughout its constituency. There are black and brown and Asian Latino people that live in the city of Tucker. And yet there's no representation. So I decided that there are some things that we need to voice and we need to be said. And and I wanted to make sure that the city of Tucker has some diversity in hearing diverse. Things from the city, from the constituents in the city. I'm running on citizens citizens and community funds. Innovation on how we do affordable housing and how we develop and also authenticity and accountability. Those are my platforms. Those are the things that I want to just help implement in the city of Tucker to continue to grow and see the city develop in a great way.
Thank you. Vin, you have two minutes to make your opening statement.
Great, thank you. Hi, I'm Vin Nguyen. I'm proud to be running for Tucker City Council District two. I've called Tucker home for over twenty-five years now. I was raised just off of Idlewood Road. I've been through our school system from Idlewood Elementary School to Tucker High School. Thanks to my experiences within the Marine Corps and as a professional cybersecurity engineer. I've had several opportunities to demonstrate my leadership skills in high-stakes situations. With my career path, I've developed valuable a valuable skill set that I can bring to the table. As our community grows and continue to modernize. Most importantly, I truly love this community. My platform is all about affordability, conscientious growth and encouraging economic development. If we want to continue to hold on to our small-town community feel, we need to ensure that all generations can afford to live here. From our elderly residents to the youngest who are just now setting out on their own. At the same time, if we want to see new businesses and entertainment options, we need the population and business-friendly policies to support it. I truly believe in the value of fresh ideas and a diversity of voices at the table. My longstanding connections throughout this community allows me to offer up voices and opinions that aren't often heard. At the various boards and commission at City Hall. At the end of the day, this position serves to represent you, this citizens of Tucker, not my own agenda. I want to be your voice at City Hall. I'm excited to be here today and I look forward to meeting more of you out there.
Thank you. Derek West, you will have two minutes to make your opening statement.
Well, good morning. My name is Derek West. I am running for City Council District two post two. One thing that I'd like to start off by saying is that I really truly enjoy living in the city of Tucker. I've been a Tucker resident for over sixteen years. I find this to be a very welcoming city, a very inclusive city. And I want to make sure that as individuals get to know me, they understand that I am one of those individuals who definitely like to get things done. When it comes to listening to the voices of the people, the citizens of the Tucker, because again, I am a part of the city. And I want to make sure that all voices are heard. When it comes to people asking the questions of why are you running? Because I want to see, want to be that change that I see and I want to make sure that everyone has a seat at the table. And that voice is heard because you have to be able to connect with the community. I do a very good job of making that connection very strong with the city and the citizens of Tucker. Because I think if everyone understands, once that connection is made, then things definitely can get done if the right conversations are being had about certain issues. The platforms that I'm running on, of course, is public safety is definitely high on the priority list. We want to make sure that all the citizens understand the relationship that it that happens when you are inclusive in that city. And making sure that everything is on one accord. Affordable housing is another platform that I that I'm very passionate about. And also making sure that the other platform is noted, the financial stability of the city's resources. So I want to accomplish all of those three areas in my platform as a candidate for Tucker City Council.
Thank you so much. So we're going to get to our questions. Now, if you go to Decatorsvotes.com, you'll see that all these candidates have answered our Q and A. These questions are going to kind of stem from the answers that we got on the Q and A. Some of them are sort of original questions. Since we started with Patrice, we're going to go down the list and start with Vin for this question, then make it back around. So the first question is, I wanted to start because I didn't realize this until I sat down and looked at the Q and As. No matter who wins this race, the result of this election will be the first time a person of color has served on the Tucker City Council. And I wanted to know, what does that mean to each of you personally? And do you think representation in politics is important? And we'll start with Vin on this question. You have two minutes.
Great, thank you Dan. You know, I think diversity and representation means a lot. You know, I came over here as a refugee, coming into Clarkson, moving over here. So my experiences are drastically different than if you were natively born within Tucker or the surrounding cities, you know. I think currently with the population breakdown of Tucker. We are drastically underrepresented as people of color at City Hall. One of the best things about the city of Tucker is our community and specifically our culture. If you were to show up to one of our football games today, you would see that our culture really shines comparatively to the teams and towns that we play against. You know, with the diversity of our backgrounds, we bring different ideas, different issues. And different problems that we we can solve, right? And we have different viewpoints to solve issues. We have, we can do different takes on, let's say, traffic affordability. So I think, you know, representation really plays into just about every aspect of being at City Hall.
Thank you. Derek, same question to you. What are your thoughts on the historic nature of this election for this particular seat? And do you think that representation in politics is important? You have two minutes.
Well, I do think that representation is is definitely important. One of the things that, to answer the question Dan you asked, says. It does matter simply because it focuses on the actual growth of the city. We see the change happening right before our eyes. When it comes to the development and the growth of the city and it shows the very diversity of the city. So I definitely, it definitely matters and it definitely matters in politics simply because you want that representation to be shown across the board. When it comes to the matters at hand, everyday citizens who are a part of the community. Definitely want to see someone that looks like them on being represented when they have issues. We all know when those things happen, who do we go to? We go to the, we go to those individuals to represent us. And we definitely want to make sure that individuals and people of color that are represented it because it gives you a broad spectrum of of the community. Take a look at it as you walk out of your door. Your neighbor may not necessarily look just like they looked five years ago. Because the growth and development of the city has changed. So it definitely matters. And it definitely one of those things where it speaks to, again, as I said before, the growth and the diversity of the city.
Thank you. Patrice, same question to you. What do you think about the historic nature of this election and what does representation in politics? Do you value that? Do you think that that matters?
Absolutely. So representation in politics, even the playing somewhat. So it helps with letting us be on the same level. And when I say us, I mean black, brown, the black, brown community. Be on a level playing, that means that we're at the table, we're making the decisions with with a collective group of people. It's not just a collective group of people making a decision for us. It helps us be heard. It helps us again be represented. To me, this is, it will be an exciting experience to have. You know, either any, you know, all of us again are black and brown. So that helps us, you know, just collectively be heard on a whole, on the whole spectrum. I do also identify with another group that is definitely not representative. From my understanding across City Hall, I mean across the the City Council as far as the LGBTQIA community as well. So, you know, it also will allow a multiple of voices that are not represented in City Council to be heard, not just my black and brown side, but also my preference side. So that that alone would be a great difference that has that would be made. And I agree, the fact that three of us are running shows that there is growth and that also means that our voice has not been heard. And we are, you know, now starting to get out, striving to get our voices heard so that we can be represented and not have to be and be a participant of the policies and things happening, not just a recipient of it.
Thank you so much. Thank you all for taking time to address that question. Our next question, we're going to start with Derek for this. So Tucker City manager Tammy Hanlon recently announced her retirement. If you're elected, you'll be responsible for hiring her replacement. What qualities are you looking for in a city manager? You have two minutes.
Well, I think when you are looking for qualities for a city manager, you definitely want an individual who who listens. Listening is a very important skill set, I think, in a lot of positions. I mean, with me having a background in human resources for more than thirty years, this is some of the things that you definitely look for. And the qualities and the attributes that you want in an individual who can make very sound decisions based on the information that's being heard and being presented. When you have a great, a candidate with a strong skill set, those attributes such as listening, such as sound decision-making and problem-making skills. Those abilities, it definitely helps you make as far as the best decision that you can make. And so an individual who has those skills, has those attributes would definitely be one that you would look for in a city manager. Also with that experience, having, looking for individuals who have done, worked as a city manager and could have those leadership skills. All of those things come into play when you're looking and sourcing candidates for a specific position.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, I think you meant problem-solving skills?
Problem-solving skills.
Gotcha. All right. Just wanted to clarify. Patrice, same question to you. Two minutes, you're going to be tasked if you're elected with hiring the next city manager. What qualities are you looking for in a city manager? Two minutes.
I just started the city council class on on yesterday. And that was the first thing, introducing the different parts of the city and the managerial part of it. And the one thing that she said to us in whole is that she has to play Switzerland. So we definitely want to make sure that there is in that the person that is hired has a balance between knowing a balance on, you know, providing equal and fair advice or fair policy or fair rules across the board, not just taking one side over the other because of personal preference. I think that is very important because that keeps a balance within the structure of the city. I would again look for the same values, someone who knows the job, knows how to do the job, has done it successfully in the past. Someone who definitely believes in accountability, someone who definitely understands running an organization like a city. I think that with how they are doing the national search, I think that alone will come into play because of how they are, they structured the qualifications. I do know that that is something that they were very adamant about when they put it out for publication for the nationwide search. So that is what I would look for, someone who knows how to play fair and someone who understands how to run a city.
Thank you. Vin, same question to you. If you're elected, you will be tasked with hiring Tucker's next city manager. What qualities are you looking for? Two minutes.
Great, thank you. You know, I think everyone kind of touched upon it. We need someone that listens to our citizens, right? No matter what their background, their economic stance is, they need to be heard. This person not only need to listen, they need to work off of, you know, pure analytical stats. This means that we are addressing all the issues. And we are ranking them appropriately, not just by who makes the loudest noise at City Council, who shows up the most, right? Because if you look at it, not everyone has that opportunity to show up in the late evenings to City Council to, you know, make their voice heard. If you're a single mother raising a child, it's not really feasible for you to show up. So I think that's kind of one of the biggest things. We need to look at their history of what they've done, what cities they've represented. And to, we want to analyze to see if that's where we want them to guide Tucker down, right? We wanted it to look a certain way. We wanted to follow along our comprehensive plan that the majority of us had voted for and agreed upon. One of the most important things though is their ability to explain complex situations and issues. They have to have a fundamental grasp on these issues to be able to explain it to every individual, every person, not just the city council or the mayor. I think lastly, they have to be easy to work with. At the end of the day, they're working with city council, they're working with the people, they're working with the mayor. If they're not pleasant to work with, you know, it's going to be a rough time until their tenure is over.
Thank you. Oh, that's a loud noise. I didn't realize it made a noise. Okay, so thank you for that. Next question, and we're going to start with Patrice for this one. The city of Tucker recently adopted a non-discrimination ordinance. What is your opinion of the ordinance and the process behind adopting it? You have two minutes.
So I literally read the ordinance. I really, I, I, I was, someone brought it to my attention. And for me, the ordinance itself was, I mean, everybody wants you to adopt an ordinance that says, hey, we don't discriminate. We have a level playing field. I mean, that's just the main thing to do. However, are we holding businesses, city council or other constituents to that? From what I'm understanding, by polling and getting out, there, there are very specific things that people in the community have seen that don't think Tucker is really following through necessarily with the ordinance. They, I mean, you know, personally, why? I don't know if these people have reported or anything. I just know their stories on the ordinance and how, I mean, on the discrimination that they've experienced within the city itself. So I would think I would, as a city council member, just make sure that we are not just passing things or creating things. But we are actually following through with these, these policies and ordinance and things that we set within Tucker. It's not about making, it's not about putting it into action. It's about actually holding it, holding businesses and people and constituents and everybody accountable to the policies that we put in play. What's the point of having a policy and we don't actually activate, use it, or, you know, make it make sense or make it useful within the community? So for me, it would be great job Tucker on passing an ordinance, but what are we doing to hold that, hold people accountable to that ordinance?
Thank you. Vin, same question to you. Tucker recently adopted a non-discrimination ordinance. What's your opinion of that ordinance and the process behind passing it? You have two minutes.
You know, I think the city had did tremendous amount of work. The work spanned over four years, you know, through multiple revisions. This issue is a personal one to me. You know, I'm a minority. I have multiple family members that are in the LGBTQ community. I'm also a veteran, which was another class that was protected by the NDO. You know, I think that the city council did a really good job of balancing the issue, getting a lot of this equality and representation for and protection for our, you know, misunderstood community, misrepresented. There are checks and balances within the provision, just, you know, to check abuse. I think one thing that that we need to continue and work upon is equity for all of our underrepresented communities, right? It's not just the ones that are listed in here. I think there's still a long way to go for us. This was a huge symbolic win for Tucker, regardless if it is in force or even if it's flagged by a citizen within Tucker. This signifies and signals to those outside that Tucker is growing, Tucker is progressing and Tucker is always on the move.
Thank you. Derek, same question. Tucker just passed a non-discrimination ordinance. What's your opinion of that ordinance? And what's your opinion of the process behind passing it? You have two minutes.
Well, this one, as far as, I was part of the non-discrimination ordinance committee. I served on that committee. So understanding that this definitely was something that's very true and passionate that I feel very strongly about. And it goes to, again, the diverse community that we have. We are a city that we want to make sure that those individuals who have a desire to come to the city, whether to live or to do business, that we will not tolerate just any type of discriminatory practices when it comes to that. So my opinion of that, I'm certainly glad that the non-discrimination ordinance was passed. I think it definitely puts us on a playing field where other surrounding municipalities have the ordinance. But what we have to do as a city, and if I'm elected, is to educate the individuals about the process should they face that type of discrimination or any type of discrimination within the city, because there is a process for that. And I think the more education we give to our citizens and constituents about the process, if they are faced with that, then certainly it helps them to understand the ins and the outs of that ordinance and how it is there as a protective measure. And I think the way individuals, once they learn about something and they understand it a little better, it helps them with the process. And as far as passing it, I'm certainly glad that the city council did pass it and I am totally on board with that.
Thank you. Next question, we're going to start, I believe we started with Patrice for the last question, so we're going to start with Vin for this question. Vin, candidates running for Tucker City Council work in various fields. What skills do you use in your regular job that you think would be useful in your role as a city council member? Two minutes.
Yeah, thank you. You know, my, my career as a cybersecurity professional, it involves solving novel issues with creative ideas, right? We're always problem-solving. We take statistical analysis of what's going on. We're making educated decisions. We're not just going off of our gut feeling or whatever someone says. The critical thinking part of my job is that part, problem-solving. You know, not everything can be done by the book. Not everything has a prescribed way that's been done before. While Tucker does face, you know, many of the similar situations as the rest of the US. There are some that are just specifically unique to us, you know, ones such as the Johns Homestead Park with rebuilding the dam. That's, that's a big part of our community. It requires a lot of different answers and solutions.
Thank you. Derek, same question to you. Candidates running for Tucker City offices all have a diverse skill set, work in different jobs and roles. What do you do? What skills do you use in your job that you think you could use and would be beneficial as a Tucker City Council member? You have two minutes.
Well, what I do, I'm a human resources manager by profession. I have over thirty years' experience in human resources management, working in various industries, you know, such as finance, healthcare, telecommunications, IT, manufacturing. But I also serves on various boards and committees throughout the city of Tucker. As I stated, a part of the non-discrimination ordinance committee. I was the chairman of the City of Tucker Charter Review Commission. And I currently serve on the City of Tucker Planning Commission. So leadership abilities, leadership skills, those are the things that qualify me in order to run this race and be elected, should I be elected in this role, because you have to have those, those kind of attributes in order to be successful and to be a very efficient candidate to run for city council. So I definitely think those types of things qualify me for the role.
Thank you. Patrice, same question to you. What skills do you use in your professional life that you think would be applicable to your role as a Tucker City Council member? Two minutes.
Yes, so I am a virtual assistant. I am a legal assistant for several different attorneys. As well as I do, I do executive assistance for contractors who have big developments or things that they're building. I am the person that does everything behind the scenes from pulling permits, pulling permits to payroll, right? Also, I am a licensed travel agent. With all that being said, multitasking, customer service, representation of not just the client, but the people that the client are serving or the companies that the client are serving, as well as I'm very savvy as far as computer analytics and things like that. I kind of help with that part as well. I am interested with big budgets. I'm interested with definitely organization, organizing, sorry, organizing different departments within the different companies just to help, help the company manifest or create the things that it is that they are trying to do at the time. I definitely think that my skill set as a, as a mother, first of all, which is always on duty, never-ending, it never stops. Plays a part and a role because it actually gives us time to juggle a lot of different things and a lot of different opinions with still keeping the main focus ahead in front of us.
Thank you very much. Great answers to that question. I like how everybody hurt up a little bit. I know people, people really enjoy talking about what they do and I enjoy talking about what I do. So next question, one of the unique things about Tucker is term limits. We're going to start with Derek on this. Do you agree with term limits? And if elected, would you ask the legislature to change the charter to end term limits? You have two minutes. And if elected, would you ask the legislature to change the charter to end term limits? You have two minutes.
Well, I, I think, um, in, in, in term of the term limit itself. Term limits definitely can work twofold. Um, one of the things that I like to add, that one of the things that I like to tell people is about term limits. You want to make sure that you have the right individual in place going into, uh, any type, uh, of seat. When it comes to term limits. Um, I personally don't have a problem with term limits, uh, when it comes to that. Uh, but what I definitely want to make sure is that if in, if individuals understand as far as if you have the right person in place. And the, you have to let the voters decide on that, because if they feel that there's an individual is not doing what they were elected to do. Then certainly you have the authority as a voter to get them out of office. Uh, but the main thing when it comes to term limits, you want to make sure, uh, that you have the right individual that is in place. And if the voters, uh, make their voices known that, hey, we don't want, um, we want term limits to be removed. Then that's certainly s- something that needs to be advocated for. But personally, I don't have a problem with term limits. Like, they can work twofold. If the individual is, you know, going in and doing what they're supposed to do, then that's great. Have them in there for that term. Uh, but again, if they're not, then certainly the voters have that option to vote them out.
Thank you. Patrice, uh, question to you, two minutes. Uh, Tucker's unique in that it has term limits. What's your opinion on Tucker's term limits? And would you ask the legislature to change that? Two minutes.
I, uh, personally, I agree with term limits. Because to me, uh, if you have an unlimited of time or amount of time to say, serve in a position. Then it doesn't give you, uh, it doesn't give you the innovation or the different perspectives. That may have changed over the time, for instance, how, uh, we as city council, uh, members can serve. Uh, one term is four years, two term is eight years. After about four to eight years, there needs to be a new perspective. There needs to be some innovative thing. And there needs to be some differences in what is being said and how rules are being made. Because life is fluid, right? Life, economy is fluid, people are fluid, energy, things change all the time. So for us, if we get people in place that are, that can stay forever. Or for instance, not stay long enough to make a difference, then that, that also weighs a balance. On how we actually make a change and how we actually effectively.
Uh, Patrice, you're, we're having a sound issue with you. I'm sorry. It, uh, you cut out and. I can't hear you at all now. I'm so sorry. Nope, I, I hear some weird static going on.
Can you hear me now?
I hear you perfectly now. Uh, I'll give you, I'll give you thirty extra seconds if you want to finish that answer out.
What was the last thing you guys to heard? Cause I'm not sure.
I, I'm not sure, to be honest with you.
Okay, I, I was just saying that I agree, uh, I like, I like the fact that we have terms and there's a dead end. Because at the end of the day, you know, there needs to be different perspectives in order to keep a city vibrant and going. You need different perspectives and different points of views. And so if we get someone who completely stays, then, you know, we're not opening ourselves up to greater revenue that possibly could happen.
Thank you. Uh, Vin, question to you. Uh, Tucker has term limits. Do you agree with that? Uh, and if not, would you ask the legislature to change it? Two minutes.
I absolutely agree with it without a doubt. You know, term limits are a great thing for a democratic, uh, republic, right? Um, we know that statistically incumbents get the benefit, uh, and the majority of the share of votes. Just because they've been there, unless they do something drastically unpopular or polarizing. Uh, it's just not realistic to seat them. Um, as I said in my opening statements, I love new fresh ideas. Um, we need new eyes and perspectives on every issue, right? If I'm sitting on city council for eight years, there's a lot of things that have changed around me while I've been busy working for the city. Um, you know, we look at a global, uh, uh, a Georgia wide level. We have cities without term limits. Um, they have a lot of mayors and governors that are not popular. Um, but no one can unseat them, right? Um, we have a lot of the stale ideas, progress not really moving at the same speed as, uh, the citizens wish. Um, we have a problem with, uh, incumbents just kind of sitting there. And in, in acting their power, you know, at the end of the day, I'm not here to gain power. I'm here to represent the people. We have a, um. A fr- you know, a, a large pool of candidates, uh, with really great skillsets, uh, to bring to the table.
Thank you. Uh, okay, uh, next question, we're gonna start with Patrice. Uh, let's give him this. What are your ideas to improve pedestrian safety in Tucker? You have two minutes.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now. Yep.
Okay, let's start with that one. All right, um, for me, I am a advocate for lessening our carbon footprint. Just on the whole in general, um, because we don't talk enough about climate change and what we are doing to mother earth, right? And so I am an advocate for making sure that walking trails connect, not just, um, not just downtown. Areas but around the city, like, I want to be able, I should be able to walk from one neighborhood to another. You know, relatively uncomplicatedly, if that's a word, uh, on sidewalks or provided paths, right? I think that we can all get connected. It not only promotes health in our bodies, but health in the environment as well. And I am an advocate for making sure that we have walking trails, making sure we have sidewalks, making sure the sidewalks are walkable. Making sure that they are not, or even where if you have an older community, that they can ride their scooters on the sidewalk. Cause it promotes family time, it promotes outside energy and oxygen coming within, you know, with, to someone. So I really think that that is something that we should definitely continue on the path of creating, upgrading. And implementing in the city of Tucker.
Thank you. Uh, Vin, same question to you. What are your ideas for improving pedestrian safety in Tucker? Two minutes.
Um, again, this is one of those kind of, uh, personal issues to me. Um, growing up here, uh, we didn't have many sidewalks. We didn't have many pedestrian, uh, oriented, uh, traffic, uh, controls, right? Um, I've walked up and down Idlewood to get to school, uh, from the Idlewood Elementary. When I was about six to seven years old, all the way to Tucker High School at eighteen. Um, it was always just like a very dangerous situation. So I'm, I'm really happy that the council and the mayor has dedicated so much funding to the path. Um, you know, with that said, with any kind of change to, uh, traffic, we need to make smart, educated decisions. I know that the city has made a lot of, uh, changes to Sharmili Tucker, uh, and Brockett Road. Those aren't always well, uh, received. Um, I think that we can do a little bit better. On trying to walk that middle line, uh, to, uh, make sure that, you know, drivers are safe. And pedestrians are safe, um. You know, with, with the path as one of our major, uh, initiatives to, uh, provide safe. Uh, trails and transport for our citizens. Um, I, I think we can also leverage that in multiple ways as a economic driver for the community. You know, we look at the way, uh, the Belt Line has made Atlanta prosper and grow so rapidly. Uh, we can enact a lot of those same decisions and policies, uh, while trying to control it. To maintain our community. Um, I also have walked to city council multiple times. Um, Lawrenceville Highway is just pitch black. I would like to see more lighting in areas. Where there are a lot of pedestrians walking, uh, better, uh, visibility. And for Tucker to work into the, uh, Project Vision Zero, which ensures that, uh, drivers are held accountable. And the pedestrian safety is, uh, first.
Thank you. Derek, same question to you. What are your ideas to improve pedestrian safety in Tucker? You have two minutes.
Well, one of the ideas regarding, um, pedestrian save is educating them of the importance of it. Um, I think when you see the improvements that the city, uh, definitely has made in regards to the various safety, uh, protocols. That have been put in place along Brockett Road, um, and, you know, uh, Sharmili Tucker, those things, they come about. And I think education is very, very vital, uh, uh, about the, educating the city about the importance of that. Uh, so that's basically one of the things that I want to make sure that the voters understand. When there is public safety and pedestrian safety, uh, you want to make sure that when you are out, that you're walking the trails. You want to make sure that the, that there is adequate lighting that are on the trails. And I definitely will work, uh, with, you know, those stakeholders who have an, a, a vital role in making those decisions. When it comes to lighting those pathways, integrating those trails along with, you know, the comprehensive master plan. And connecting those neighborhoods to keep those individuals, you know, safe and secure, to get them out of their cars. But also getting them the understanding of, here's what you need to do if you are put in a particular situation. Where, where are you in the city? If there are call boxes that are, that need to be implemented. All that kind of works in tandem with getting individuals to understand. We are making these, the, the city a much friendlier city when walkability is concerned. But we also want to ensure that as you're doing that, that you are safe and that you feel secure by doing so.
Thank you. Uh, and so we're, we're making good on our time. Uh, I, I didn't get to all the questions I wanted to get to today. But I think we've gotten a good sampling of some good questions. So I think what we're gonna do here is we're gonna ask one more question that's kind of weighty. And then we're gonna move into our, uh, closing statements. Is that okay with everyone? Great. Okay, great. Uh, so we're gonna start, uh, this last question with Vin. And then we're gonna go around and then make our closing statements. Uh, the question is, do you support inclusionary zoning in Tucker? That would require new multifamily projects to set aside a percentage of units as affordable housing? Two minutes.
Uh, yes, absolutely. That's, that's one of my major, uh, platforms, right? Is affordability, uh, for the community, um. You know, I, I grew up here. There are hundreds of my classmates, um, that have not been able to afford living here. You know, they've been really priced out of their own neighborhoods. Um, that's something that we want to keep inside of Tucker, right? These are people that are dedicated to Tucker. They want to see Tucker grow. Uh, and they are very, very heavily invested within Tucker. So affordability of housing should be one of our top hurdle, if not the most, uh, the highest priority. Um, with inclusionary, you know, zoning, uh, for these multi-use family. I, I think that we need to take a look at what we've done, uh, where we've accomplished and where we failed. Uh, the downtown area was rezoned seven years ago, uh, for multi-use. However, that multi-use, uh, was knocked down to twenty-four dwelling units per acre. Um, in that past seven years, there has been zero developments downtown, right? It hasn't driven, uh, people there. It hasn't driven, uh, developers, even with the record low, uh, in- interest rates. That they could borrow upon. Um, so I think, you know, th- there's a lot of work that we can do to help incentivize, work with these developers. Get the good developers, you know, we have a huge network of people, uh, with connections in the, uh, construction area. That we can leverage. Uh, we want to make sure that all these houses that are built are also built, uh, secure and sound for people's safety. Yep.
Okay, uh, Derek, same question to you. Two minutes. Do you support inclusionary zoning in the city of Tucker?
Uh, yes, um, thank you for that. I, housing affordability is indeed in, 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 in a concern here in Tucker. Uh, you know, as it is in many growing communities, uh, but it's important that we take that, a proactive approach, uh, to address that issue. And to ensure that all residents have access to affordable, to affordable housing options. Um, so we, you know, some of my, um, ideas to increase affordability, um, housing in Tucker. Is to basically you have to have diverse housing options, um, in that aspect. Um, a key strategy is to address those, you know, of, uh, uh, housing affordability in Tucker is to have those options. That involves encouraging, uh, mixed-use housing income developments that include both affordable rentals, affordables and rentals. That are moderately, uh, prices, homes that are moderately priced, I should say. Um, but you also want to make sure that you have, uh, a, a developer incentive to incentivize the construction of those affordable housing. Uh, because we can explore those partnerships with developers, uh, but that may include offering tax, um, uh, in- initiatives. Or reducing permitting fees or facilitating grants to make affordable housing projects financially feasible, you know, for individuals. Those sorts, uh, or incentives can definitely stimulate the development of housing that's accessible. So it's accessible to a wide range of residents. Um, also land use policy, reviewing of and, and revising, uh, the land use policy is another critical step. You know, by allowing for higher density housing in those suitable areas. So you want to make sure that we can in, in, increase those houses. So all the collaboration and resources is very key in partnering with, you know, various resources and agencies to, you know, streamline the approval process. Expedite the development of, of those affordable housing projects and reduce costs to promote those, that construction.
Thank you. Uh, Patrice, question to you. Do you support inclusionary house is owning in the city of Tucker? Two minutes.
Yes, um, of course, uh, uh. I support the inclusion in the zoning part of, um, of, of that development. Uh, I just would like us to be careful on how many or how much of that we allow. In the city of Tucker to happen, um, some of the things that I've been reading upon in the, uh. In the comprehensive plan, um, one of the, you, I guess it's a little confusing. Because some of them are literally, some of the suggestions are literally to take communities out to rebuild a community. And add those multiple homes and those multiple family homes there. But it doesn't talk about the affordability of the homes right now in Tucker. A studio apartment is thirteen hundred dollars. That's a studio. So if we are not addressing, uh, the affordable part of building these multifamily homes. And allowing for more than. Four percent of the building or the multiple family homes to be affordable. Then really we are etching out the community that is currently here. Um, I know that not a lot, not a lot of the communities can afford right now to move back into Tucker. If they had to go and come back, a lot of them would not make it back into the city. Um, for instance, in Peterstown, they are building this big two-point-something million-dollar house next to these houses. That are not going to be able to afford property taxes right there. So we have a lot to work on when it comes to that part and rebuilding multiple family homes.
Thank you. And, uh, that is the end of our questions for today. Uh, thank you all to the candidates for participating. I'm gonna give you each two minutes to make a closing statement and we're gonna start with Patrice and go down the line. Uh, Patrice, you have two minutes to make a closing statement.
Great. Uh, again, I am Patrice Cosby. I am looking for your votes here in November. Uh, early voting starts, I believe, October the sixteenth, uh, and so I am looking for, for your support. I bring about a different voice, a different outlook, a different perspective that, that is currently here. Um, again, I am wanting to just make a, make a difference within our community, community first. Um, innovation and accountability, innovation and how we bring in, how we bring up in. And how we redevelop the city of Tucker. I'm so sorry, the phone's going off, uh, but, human, right? Uh, but I really do wish, um, to make a difference and I never saw myself in life doing anything like this. My friends and family cannot believe it that I am here, but if you want to make a difference, you have to be a difference and that is what I want to do.
Thank you. Uh, Vin, uh, two minutes to make your closing statement.
Yep. Uh, first, I want to thank the caterers for holding this forum. Um, I want to thank the viewers who are watching this and educating themselves on their candidates. Uh, which is a key part of our democracy process. Uh, more, most importantly, I want to thank the citizens of Tucker that have shown me so much love and support thus far. Um, again, Vin, when, mm, running for Tucker City Council District Two. Uh, I will be a strong leader who will bring fresh and actionable ideas to the table. Um, you know, I, I still hold my Marine Corps values, uh, to this day of honor, courage and commitment. Um, you know, I will serve with honor and integrity, um, by using, uh, by being transparent and honest with you. I will have the courage to do the right things when it is difficult to do so. Uh, and I have, I will have the committed, um, I will be committed to you, the citizens of Tucker. Uh, and building a brighter future for all of us. Um, you can read more about my platform and find, uh, more my contact information at vinforTucker.com. That's V I N H F O R. That's V I N H F O R Tucker dot com. Uh I'd love to see you at our October event, uh we'll have the details posted on our website soon.
Thank you, uh Derek.
Closing. Oh, thank you, I'd like to thank the caterers for hosting this, um I'm again, my name is Derek West, I'm running for city council district two post two. Uh first and foremost, my extensive background in human resources, uh with over thirty years of experience across various industries. Have equipped me with a unique skill set in personal management, conflict resolution and strategic planning. Uh these types of skills have directly, you know, transferable to the role of city of the city council member. Where effective communication and decision making are very vital. Uh secondly, my longstanding commitment to public service is evident through my active involvement with various boards and committees. Uh throughout the city of Tucker, uh serving as the, again, chairman of the Charter Review Commission. Uh my current role is member of the Planning Commission, it's had given me invaluable insight into our city's governance. And the complexities of a community and the development of the city. Uh my experience uh allows me to hit the ground running from day one and to make a meaningful impact. Uh furthermore, my dedication and collaboration and inclusive inclusivity sets me apart. You know, it makes me understand, I have to believe in listening to the concerns and ideas of Tucker citizens. As well as working very closely uh with fellow council members and stakeholders to find that common sense solutions to those community challenges. So I am committed to fostering an environment of respectful dialogue and cooperation. Uh lastly, my deep love for Tucker, its history, its people fuels my passion for this role. I've made Tucker my home for many, many years and I'm genuinely invested in its future and I understand. The importance of preserving our city's unique character while ensuring its growth and prosperity, so I would welcome your support. And you can visit my website for more information, it's Derek West, D E R I K W E S T dot com. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek, and thank you to all of the candidates uh for your interest in public service, you know, I don't, I don't feel like this gets said enough. But uh good government requires good people to step up and run. Uh and I'm I'm very thankful that there are people in all of our communities who are who are willing to put themselves out there. Subject themselves to this kind of scrutiny and answer these kinds of questions, I think it's very important for the health of of our entire county, so I thank you for that. Um as you uh might have heard at the beginning of this, this is the District Two Post Two Tucker City Council Forum. The elections are November seventh, I do believe early voting starts October sixteenth. You can find all of our elections coverage at Decaturishvotes dot com. You can find a video of this forum on uh the Decaturish YouTube channel or the Decaturish Facebook page. Just search for it, Decatur with an I S H at the end of it, you can find it. While I have everyone's attention, uh we are doing our fall fundraiser, we're trying to raise twenty-five thousand dollars by December. Uh to cover our year-end expenses, you know, when we take on election coverage like this. It adds to the cost to what we do considerably because we still have to cover all the other stuff we usually cover. We're doing really well on it so far, we've got about thirty-five hundred, we'd always appreciate the support. So visit uh support your local news or support mylocalnews dot com for more information about that fundraiser. Uh if you appreciate this opportunity from the to hear from the candidates, we hope you will uh chip in. Again, uh that election is gonna be on November seventh, uh Decaturishvotes dot com is where you can learn more about all the candidates. Uh and we appreciate everyone joining us today, have a nice day.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, bye bye.